Call the order for a Watertown City Council meeting for May nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. Please rise while I will say a prayer. Dear God, we wanted to take a moment and give honor to you who gives breath in our lungs, beats in our hearts, and a yearning for you in our spirit. We want to thank you today for living in a wonderful community where we can trust our neighbors and feel safe. And especially today, we want to give a moment to say silent thanks to the men and women who devote their lives to keeping us safe. And that is the people in our law enforcement and our fire department and everyone who goes out of their way and makes their life a devotion to the safety and security of everyone else in this community. With the fire today at Hosanna Lutheran, we want to say thank you to all the men and women who worked on that and fighting that fire. And we also want to take a moment and share our hearts with everyone at that church and in the community because in the end, we are all brothers and sisters in this community. So thank you very much for the community that we live in and the future that we are facing. We ask your blessing on this meeting and on the future of Watertown. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Interim city manager, find out who's here.
Okay. Keeler? Danforth?
Here.
Holene?
Here.
Jerrance?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Thank you.
Coram is established. Chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any conversation on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We'll go on to a, actually, sorry, open forum. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on anything that is not on today's agenda? While we know you, someone in the audience might not, so please introduce yourself and who you're representing tonight. Make sure the green light is on.
There we go. Thank you for having me. I am Sarah Faust. I'm the Director of Cottington County Community Services. I'm here tonight representing Cottington Connects. And I wanted to just invite all of you as city council members to the community event that we're having on May twenty-ninth. It's really a community celebration. And so I wanted to make sure that you're all aware of it and invite you myself. This has been a collaboration between a lot of different organizations in our community. It's been a great effort for everybody to come together. All of the Cottington Connects members, which we have about forty-six, forty to fifty, Cottington Connects members have come, have decided that we wanted to put on an event for families. And this really serves a few purposes. One is to show the collaboration from social service providers and nonprofits in our community. Also to let our community know what resources are out there. And then thirdly, and most importantly, just to give our families a fun opportunity to celebrate and to enjoy each other as a family. So this event is the Thursday night before Thursday Night Live. We had about twenty people in our planning committee, which again, I wanted to thank the city for because we had representation from the library, Park and Rec, as well as other county entities. All of them will be there as having a booth. It's going to be a fun family event Thursday night, May twenty-ninth from five to eight. Supper will be served by Relia Bank. And we have just a really good group planning it and coordinating it for the community, so.
Sarah, did you say where was that?
Foundation Plaza.
Okay.
Thank you.
I didn't know if I caught that or not.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on something not on today's agenda? All right, we'll go straight into item eight A. A presentation on the Prairie Lakes Ice Arena being recognized as the Small Cities Rural Communities Project of the Year Structure for two thousand and twenty-five by the American Public Works Association. Excuse me, just a quick woo-hoo. And we will open it up for, are we going to Justin first? So city engineer, Justin Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. This week is Public Works Week, and it's pretty fitting that we announce that City Watertown Ice Arena project has been recognized by APWA as the Project of the Year. This is the first national award from APWA, but the City of Watertown has, there's been another national, this is the second national award in the last five years that City Watertown has had. And so I, this kind of shows the staff and dedication that we have in the Public Works Department. So I want to congratulate them. The Ice Arena project specifically is a community project. It couldn't have been done with many people in this room, so I'd like to thank them. We had the design team of JLG, Tom Betties online, the contractor RJM and Crestone. Tegra is our owner's representative, and then the Build It Now Committee, who did a tremendous job in fundraising. And for those that haven't been to the Ice Arena, I encourage you to go out there and take a look at the donor wall and look at the individuals and businesses that support, supported this, this project and support them as well. So. And I want to thank the council as well. And with that, turn it over. Kirk Peppel is the delegate to APWA.
Yeah, thanks, Justin. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Kirk Peppel. I am here representing the South Dakota chapter of the American Public Works Association, where I serve on the Board of Directors and then also a delegate to the APWA National. During the day, I'm an Assistant City Engineer with the City of Sioux Falls. I'm grateful to be here tonight during National Public Works Week to help celebrate this great project and great award. Not going to go into a lot of the details. Justin did that, and I know Laura's going to do a few more things. Just thought I'd give a little background on what APWA is for those that don't know. The APWA was founded in nineteen thirty-seven as a professional coalition, association that supports public works professionals in the United States and Canada, provides education, advocacy, and networking opportunities for individuals involved in planning, building, and maintenance of public infrastructure. The thirty-two thousand members of APWA are engineers, managers, and public agencies responsible for services like transportation, water, sanitary sewer, solid waste, emergency management, and public buildings like the Prairie Lakes Ice Arena. The organization promotes best practices for sustainability in public works through conferences, publications, and certification programs. Its goal is to enhance the quality of life in communities by advancing the effectiveness of public works. Whether you are in public works in Toronto, South Dakota, or in public works in Toronto, Canada, APWA has something for you. Our local chapter in South Dakota has about a hundred members. We offer networking workshops, professional developments tailored to our regional needs. By participating in APWA, city staff gain access to latest tools and innovations that can improve service delivery and reduce costs. The association also advocates, advocates for sound infrastructure policies at our state level. APWA recognizes excellence through annual awards similar to this one, highlighting successful projects and public service. With that, again, I thank you for having me. That was just a little bit on public works, and many of us in this room probably don't know what that is. But you use everything that public works provides on a daily basis with probably not even knowing it. Congratulate the City of Watertown again on this project and the project team for submitting the award. And I'm going to hand it off to Laura for a little bit more.
So.
Laura?
Yeah.
We all know who you are, but again, someone else in the audience might not, so please just identify yourself.
So my name is Laura Moore. I am the Executive Assistant in the Public Works Department. My role with this was gathering the details and the wonderful things that all of you did over the last couple of years and even decades to make this whole facility possible. I found the opportunity back in November twenty-four. Thought it would be a simple form to fill out, but turned into a couple months-long project. It actually took a lot of digging into the project folder, interviewing locals, getting involved with some of the groups and asking the Build It Now Committee for a lot of help and all those that work at the facility too, to help me get a good understanding of how this came to be. It was actually rather incredible, and it was really moving to do the experience. And as someone who never knew what public works was until my job interview, it was really neat to learn just all the, the parts that you can play as a citizen, elected official, a staff member, however you might have been involved with the project. I mean, everyone's contribution made it possible. So it was really just pretty awesome as someone who's never worked in the public sector before to get to do something like this and honor the work you guys did. I relied heavily on the city engineer, the interim Superintendent Matt, our now Superintendent at the Ice Arena, Tom, all the user groups, the fundraising commi, committee, Build It Now, especially Jenny and Jody, and many others like our PIO, IT, and everyone else to help me get this done. So we were actually notified back in April that we got this award. It said that we, the official title of this is Small Cities Rural Communities Public Works Project of the Year Award for two thousand and twenty-five in the Structures category. As far as we know, we are the first South Dakota project to ever win such an exclusive title. Hundreds of submissions are submitted annually and will be recognized as a community in August at the National Public Works Conference. And that ceremony, I believe, is August eighteen, where we will get that official plaque and then put in the ice facility. On top of that, we also have a new sign. I believe this is just a mock-up or will, this, this will be the one. But if you can see, I don't know if I need to put it over on that corner. But what we're basically going to do is put this below the mayor's message when you look at the donor wall. Because what we really want to do is anyone who goes and visits our facility, see that ten million dollars that was raised by our community, see the wonderful message that you crafted there, Reed. And then on top of that also, you know, have that front and center that we could only achieve something like this, something as fantastic as this award by working together as a whole community, not just as staff or elected officials, public work professionals or anything. But it truly took all of us together to get it built now, so. Any other questions on the nomination process? I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, could we see the sign?
Yes, yes, yes. Nick, tell me where to point it. Okay. Well, here you go. My little Havana white moment.
And is it just, it's just stating the award and the year and?
Yeah, basically, the text says our, our actual title. So Small Cities Rural Communities Public Works Project of the Year in the Structures category two thousand and twenty-five. American Public Works Association awarded the Prairie Lakes Ice Arena due to the extraordinary efforts of the community to make the facility possible. So yeah, we thought that would be a proper place to put it, was on that donor wall. So you can all be really proud, whoever's on there, and see what your, what your efforts accomplished.
Laura, I actually do have a question. So the criteria for winning the award, is it based upon the community support? Is it the excellence of the structure? Is it a combination of the two? Because it is fabulous.
I think there's about seven different components that come into the judging criteria. And some of those things include the construction process, the effective and creative use of materials. So something like when we were in COVID, while we can't even get this stuff, because is it even on hand? Are there people to build it? What are we going to do? How are we going to get this project done versus delay it even more and get more costly down the road? Environmental impact and awareness. So the, the rebate program that Justin utilized was fantastic because that got us over fifty thousand dollars in funding to help make the facility possible. Meeting a perceived need in the community, very obvious, obvious, is very much needed. And so the fact that we accomplished that was great. And there are just some other criteria that you can meet and explain throughout the document. It's a twenty-page document in full. You guys only got the fun part, the cool pictures and stats in your agenda item today. But some other projects will include like historical preservation. So yeah, that all will is at apwa.org too, if someone wants to see.
All right, thank you. And you mentioned the fifty thousand dollar award, that was for the energy efficiency?
Yep, yep, that rebate program that Justin was able to get all of those submitted for. Wasn't just one easy application, it was a lot of them, it was a lot of work.
All right. I know that there's a lot of people here showing support for the Ice Arena that is much appreciated. You don't have to speak. If anyone did have anything to add to this, you are more than welcome. But if not, I will open it up for council to ask questions or make a comment. Councilman Tupper.
I remember, oh, it was kind of in the beginning stages of the construction part, and we had a meeting up in the Public Works Conference Room. And Dick Strasberg, who's with Tegra Group, who was our owner's rep, which we worked with a lot of times. And he's been in the business, I think he said at that time, for like thirty-five years. He's built a lot of projects like this. He said he's never seen a community get behind a project like this before in all the years that he's been doing this. Just goes to show you the great community that we got, you know? And we couldn't have did it without the Build It Now Committee and the people that, that poured their hearts and soul into it, you know? It's part of us as the council, sticking our neck out on the line. And the, like you say, the work of the, the committee to raise that kind of money. Their Public Works Department, and like you say, the, we, we were sticking our neck out on the line a little early, ordering materials for it so we could beat, you know, stuff away before we needed it so we could get it built during the COVID period. And we knew those would hold us up. And to be able to go out there and watch a game, boy, I tell you what, it's second to none. So that facility, the City of Watertown, means more than, you know, don't get me wrong, the award is very important. But that's just one thing about the community of Watertown. I mean, we can all be proud every time we drive by or walk into the facility, so thank you very much.
Can I say something in response?
Go ahead.
Just like Sarah brought up, that, that, that group, that collective that started in the last couple of years, there's, it's not just Ice Arena or those groups. There are a million projects in this town that are so impressive. As someone who's come from Sioux Falls and, you know, tried it out and now has stuck around in Watertown and chose to buy a house here and, and live here. Like Watertown is so impressive as a community. So there's not just this to be proud of, but everyone in the room has to be proud of everything you're doing every day.
Thank you. I don't see that, that is not, Dick is not, Dick Strasberg is not online, is he? Or anyone from Tegra? Okay. Anything else, council? Thank you. Just wanted to say, and you wanted to do a photo op right now? Okay. And lay it out. I mean, I think it would be great for all these people who showed up to be part of it. So.
The Architect's Online.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if I wanted to say anything, but he, he designed this facility. It's phenomenal. I don't know. Tom, did you want to say anything?
No, I just, you know, I'm, I'm proud of your community. I think I, I agree with Dick Strasberg. It is one project because I, I'm right up there with Dick. I'm coming close to forty years in, in the architectural profession. And it's true, right? There's these projects that come along that are, are unique, and I have a handful, and this is one of them. It was that community, you know, outpouring and connection to really stick with it and keep going. And, you know, I think Mayor Reed, when we were at the grand opening, I think I told you, you know, they're talking about this building in California. I can tell you now, they're talking about it in Long Island, New York, and in Palm Beach Gardens down in Florida. So this project within the Ice Arena world is becoming and is very well-known. And I think that's a testament to everyone who's worked on it and the community at, at large and, and the council, right? To sticking with it and getting through it. Because it, it was never, it was a great experience, I think, for everyone, but it wasn't always easy. And I think the effort of the community to just see the end and stick to it, I can't commend you enough because a lot of groups and communities would have thrown their arms up and, and walked away. But I think, to me, that's some of the things that just sticks out. And then also, all the engagement throughout the project, right? Just making sure we're getting the things right for your community. So I'm very proud of this project. I've designed well over sixty ice arenas. This is one of those that's in the, the top five. It just, the, the whole process and then at the end, a, a really nice building using simple materials and, you know, adding to your, your whole, you know, city complex of facilities. And, and really, these are important buildings for the community and, and advertising the community and people to gather at and socialize. So I commend you. And like I said, it's one of my favorites.
So Tom Bettie is our architect. I thank you for all the work you did on this, and I'm going to ask you a trick question. I know that you designed, you designed an LA, NHL facility. And it's okay to say that this one is better. Go ahead, you can say it.
It's, I'll tell you what, it's, it's, it's better than one of them. It's right there neck and neck with the other ones. But I'll, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll tell you what, what's great about this project. And it's becoming, it, it, it broke ground in that a lot of community facilities, you know, this fifteen-hundred seat or below, wouldn't look at the idea of adding club levels, lounge seating, you know, a little, these mini suites, these on-ice suites. And, and you folks have, you know, the, the faith to do that. And part of what drove that is the idea to, you know, get the community involved, be able to sell, you know, some sponsorships and so on. And it, it takes a lot for people to break through and do something that no one's done before in a facility this size. And now everyone's talking about it, and they all want this type of thing in their facility. So from that standpoint, I would say you, you, you broke more ground in some of my NHL facilities.
All right, thank you very much, Tom.
You bet.
I'll take that as an answer. Councilman Danforth.
Yeah, first of all, for everybody involved, you know, I think it's a huge win, huge success for the city. And, and a couple of things that I've found really, really cool. We, we, my wife and I bought season tickets to the, the Shamrocks, and so we've been to almost every game. And those people that, that are within our community that maybe they're not too attuned to this facility or may not support it, I would ask you to take the time to go to one of those games once and see the people that are there from every cross-section within our community. Walk around the parking lot and look at where all the cars are coming from. There's, I just, and I'm not a hockey guy. I, I, I know they hit this puck around, and that's kind of it. But it is really enjoyable to see that activity in our community. It, it really is. And, and so I, everybody involved, I, I commend them. Interestingly, we've had, my wife and I have had two couples from within the state, one from Mitchell, one from Yankton, come up to join us for a game. It really kind of just to show off the, the Ice Arena as well. And they, they have nothing but incredible things to say about that facility. We had some friends of ours here recently from Canada, and they're huge hockey people. And same thing, they said, you know, in a community like this, this is unbelievable. So I, I see people here that, that were big in making this happen in your, both your, your individual support and financial support. It's a, it's a great thing. We should be very proud as a community. So thank you all.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? I will take a chant, I will take the opportunity to say thank you again. There's so many people to thank, obviously. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the community of Watertown and the visioning because it, obviously, this is an award about the construction and the community's support, and that was excellent. And I want to thank the staff for, for their great devotion to this project and seeing it through to the end because it was a lot of work. There was a lot that went into it. There are some people that are on the, not necessarily in the city, but we couldn't have done it without them. J&amp;J Earthworks is one of those that partnered with us very early. We had so many other leaps of faith. We did an original bond, and then COVID hit, and then we had to do another bond even above and beyond that to reach the most expensive public works project in Watertown history. But we kept committing ourselves to the process and recommitting it. We had to buy steel a year and a half ahead of when we would even plan on using it because we had to make sure that we had the steel ready for when everything else was going to be ready. And then we also had a community player who let us store the steel at their location. So that was also a wonderful asset to the community. To, at a very early time, we brought in Mark Frankenfeld from the NAHL. I think I got that right. And we sold the, we sold the Junior Hockey League on this proposal, just on the architecture and the community support. So most other communities would have gotten a rink, and then two years later or sometime later would have then said, oh, well, let's get a junior team. The fact that we were able to get one the first year of full operation is a testament not only to the community and the team and the league, but it's to everyone involved. The fact that we have so many people from the Watertown Figure Skater Skating Club. Thank you so much for being here and showing your support. This project would never have been built if the two user groups, the W, the Watertown Figure Skaters and the Watertown Hockey Association would not have come together at a very early time and committed their support to it and worked, and to work together. I also want to say thank you to, we have our Parks and Rec Director, Dusty Rodek back there, Tom Boland back there, who manages the rink for us. Thank you. I don't know, I'm not sure you knew what you were getting into, but we thank you for being there. And just want to say thank you again. Thank you, Kirk, for coming up, presenting us with this award. Laura, tell us how you want this picture to be taken with the crowd and you and Justin.
Okay, everyone representing Ice Arena User Group, Build It Now, all that. I think I'll move it here towards the center. But if we can have about two, three rows, and I'd love to get council in there as well, so that, thank you, Lynn, so that we can get everyone in the photo. We'll send this over to the news stations that are interested in doing the story. And Nick, thanks for taking our photo as well. And Nick, thanks for taking our photo as well.
All right, we will move on to item nine A, an approval of a lease agreement between the City of Watertown and Pelican Sports Rentals LLC. We'll go to our Parks and Rec Director, Dusty Rodick for more.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, this is in agreement, uh, with Pelican Sports LLC to provide kayak rental out at City Park. Um, the company approached us and wondered if, you know, we'd be interested in something like this. I know this has been done in the past before my time, uh, but you know, this is a great opportunity for our private business to offer a service to our park visitors. Um, we generate revenue. It gives them an opportunity to get their name out there. Uh, it's kind of a win-win for everybody.
All right. Anything more? Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agreement. Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Open it up for questions, comments. Counsel? Uh, Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this, cause we did this four, five, six years ago. Is this just basically the same contract language that was used then?
Correct. Last time it was done with Angie's Paddle and Pedal. But yeah, it was similar. We've, we've vamped it up a little bit more, but yeah, for the most part, it's the same language.
Okay. So there's a number of things that in there, that are in there contractually that are, are quite vague. Does that get ironed out by you, Dusty, in the application of this or?
For example?
For example, we tell them what park they can go in, but not where they can go?
We've, we've actually dedicated a spot, um, at City Park for them. That was prior to even talking, you know, going into this contract, said, okay, this will be the area that you'll be, uh, you know, assigned to.
Okay. And then there's use of the word reasonable twice. One is their hours of operation and the other is their access, that reasonable access will not be denied. Is there a reason why we don't have something specific so they know exactly? Or has that been, all been covered?
That's been covered.
Okay. All right. I'm good.
Any other questions or comments, Counsel? Motion is to approve the agreement. Just want to say thank you for arranging this. Be a great, uh, asset and the, and the launch, I actually used it last year and it works really well. It's very nice. So, um, all those in favor of the lease agreement will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Bueller, Danforth.
Aye.
Pauline.
Aye.
Jerrance.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Shuddy.
Aye.
Tupper.
Right.
Motion carries.
Motion carries on to item nine B, an approval of a bid award for the 2025 Parks and Recreation Improvements River Ridge Project Number 2520 to Grade A excavation in the amount of $167,817. City Engineer, Justin Peterson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Uh, this project is the first phase of the park development project in River Ridge area. It's kind of in the north northwest side of, uh, the community. And, um, this, this project includes grading, paving of parking lot, sidewalk, uh, and play hill and a shade structure. Uh, we got four bids with the lowest bid by grade A excavation, which was below the engineer's estimate and staff recommends approval. With that, I'll stand by for questions.
Director Rodick, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't, I just stayed up here in case you had any questions.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any questions or comments? Councilman Peters.
Uh, Justin, uh, I know we've had some drainage issues up there with that, with that lot. I think, I'm not sure if you were involved or if it was your predecessor, but I think it was last summer, we've had some, uh, some water piling up out there. And I think at one point it was addressed, what are we going to be doing to make sure that that water runs away from the homes and not to the homes?
We'll, we'll be grading it to, I call it get around the corner, but, uh, grade it, make sure it flows.
And are you bringing fill in to raise it up?
No, uh, just put in the play hill area is the only fill that will be brought in. And that's, I guess, south of that.
Okay, sounds good. More so just cautionary that my phone's been ringing that we've got drainage issues up there. So any improvements we can make would be great.
If I may, um, I know the street department last fall, um, was in there and I was told that they corrected the drainage to make that run, you know, basically north and then around the corner.
Any further questions or comments, Counsel? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor will say aye, opposing nay. Please call the roll. Officer Bobzine.
Okay. Uh, Bueller? Danforth? Pauline?
Aye.
Aye.
Peters?
Here and I.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item Ted A is a first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Watertown for a portion of property to be known as the replat of lots two, three, and four, Mansell Second Edition from R1 to R3 multi-family residential district. Our Community Development Manager, Brandy Hanton, will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. So this, as stated, this is the first reading of a rezone request for this piece of property located just southeast of the Sandy Shore, um, State Park and along South Lake Drive. If you recall, this property has come before counsel a couple other times, um, in 2023 and 2024, requesting different zoning designations. So the property was annexed and zoned in 2018 and brought in as R1 single family residential, where then it's been subdivided into five lots. What is being requested here, you'll see on this map is, um, this blue hatched area. This is the area that they are proposing to rezone from R1 to R3, which is multi-family residential district. It's in total 2.55 acres. Um, you'll see there along, on the north side of South Lake Drive, that is, um, has the zoning designation of R3. And the remaining lots will remain R1 single family residential. Uh, previously, when this property was requested to rezone, they requested, um, CL, Lake Commercial, and then PUD, planned unit development. And so largely the concerns that were brought up at those points, um, Planning Commission recommended approval for the CL district, which then counsel denied. And then, um, Planning Commission did not recommend approval of the PUD and counsel followed suit. So the things that were largely discussed, discussed during those hearings were density and then, um, the wetlands within this area. So they did have a wetland delineation completed at the end of 2024, which shows all of the jurisdictional wetland areas. And that is done through wetland specialists that, um, submit this information to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, who makes these determinations. So you, um, see this green area that is, um, that will not be involved with this rezone or any of the property. So we are looking at this area of what will be zoned R3 and that it does have the development potential without having jurisdictional wetlands. So with that, I think I'll stand by for any questions.
All right. Thank you. This is just a first.
Sorry. Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously, seven to zero. Sorry. That's kind of important.
Anything else important?
I don't think so.
This is a first reading, so I do not need any action. I do know that there are some people here, I think both pro and con on this issue. I would like to give them an opportunity to address the counsel, um, in a brief message if you would like to do so. It is customary to have the proponents first. So if anybody on the proponent's side would like to speak on this. It would at least.
Hi, Aaron Hanson. I live adjacent to the property on South Lake Drive, 1082 South Lake Drive. Uh, this is Russell Warner, uh, with East River and, uh, together we, we hold that LLC. I don't know if there's a whole lot to add, uh, but we could stand by for any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Did I not say that? Oh, yes, we are the owners of the property.
All right. Uh, we will ask you to just stand by.
Yeah.
I want to hear who else is here for testimony before we start asking questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the proponent's side? Anyone else on the proponent's side? Are there any neutral or opponents to this proposal?
I'm Ron DeVille. I live at, uh, 1062 South Lake Drive, right across the street from this Toby Slough there. And, uh, I'm pretty much always been completely against anything to do with a slough. This slough is, it was, is a part of Lake Compeska. It, uh, compromises its, or the slough in the, in the lake, when we get water, it depends on where's, uh, what part runs into what part. That channel goes through my property. I'd like to, I'd like to get that out of there if I, but it'll never happen because I've had people that wanted to buy my property, but they want to do something. And that's in the middle of, of my property. But all this here that's going on, I've had a lot of comments like, what the hell are they doing tearing up a beautiful slough like that? Where in South Dakota do we have a town that goes and tears up sloughs like this? You get a guy from out of state, Minnesota and tears up this slough. I mean, he started this because the price is right. Going to make some money deal, these money guys. And, uh, they can't do that in Minnesota. But they come over here and, uh, we're wide open in this area. We've done it in, in another slough. We won't talk about that. The county had a little slough over there by, by the township, uh, Compeska Village. And the guy just went ahead and did it. Well, God took care of him. He's dead. So, uh, and he built some storages over there. But what, this, when this is all gone, this is all gone. Uh, you keep doing this kind of stuff and we won't have anything to look at. I mean, our kids won't or our grandkids or whatever look at way, uh, some land's been in the old days. And, uh, I, I, that, that slough is mud. I don't know who owns the water over there. I think it's an electrical company. I've, I've heard that, but there could be some problems. Can you run boats on that slough? You know, once they start building, they, they're, uh, they're going to have one and then they're going to have more. They're going to say, well, we, you let us build this one, so we want to build another one and we want to build another one. We'll have a whole damn village over there. And then what we'll have, uh, I, the thing about it, I don't even know why, uh, Game Fishing Parks hasn't stepped into this. You gotta have permits to get in that park over there. When you start, let's say they fill up this place with kids and everything else, there's got, there's already in the summertime, a lot of activity in that area. And then put some more activity in that area and, uh, it's going to be really a mess. We don't have any, my complaint is, is, is let's say, take that narrow road we have. I've traveled around the co, the country quite a bit. A lot of, even little towns have these little signs that says how fast you're going and all that. City of Watertown got two ancient signs. They bring it out once in a while when somebody complains and they'll put it up there and a couple of days, little days later, they take it away. But you go to these little towns, little towns can afford it. I don't know why we, you know, Lake Compeska is a cash cow for the City of Watertown. The City of Watertown don't have a lot of investment over there. Uh, they get a lot of property tax from that area. And, and we've lived on there, that lake since 1951. I mean, I was just a little pup, but, um, not a lot of, uh, money from the city really went into that. We, I guess we, the way I understand it, talking to, uh, some people, we had to pay for our own, uh, water lines to our house, a, a little of this, a little of that, that they just picked away at us. They stuck these damned, uh, they let the, the contracts just put those black pipe water lines in. Crap, I think they've been all replaced yet. I still have one, so I'm hoping it. But you get looking into this stuff and they go in and they, they do all these kinds of things, but what I'm getting at, I'm, I'm kind of stuttering now. What I'm getting at, uh, they should have left this slough alone. It's a beautiful slough, was a beautiful slough. He's, they're gonna, they're gonna make a mess of it. I gotta see where the, where they can't build. I think I got a place across the road from me that they, uh, I gotta talk to Brandy about that and see where, where that's at. I've talked to the engineers that, that have, they were surveying, they, surveying that and, uh, they were putting up stakes and they said, uh, this is a wet area. They're not supposed to put any building. But in Watertown here, what's, what goes on sometimes, I don't trust anybody in this town anymore. And I grew up in this town. Somebody has bought and sold here, somebody's bought and sold there. And, uh, sooner or later, uh, they'll change that whole damn thing. I've got a daughter that wants my house too. She's, lives in Arkansas now. I don't want to sell it to her because the mess you're going to do out there, the, the, all that traffic, all that, we got enough already and all that extra. Then how many, how many apartment buildings are you going to allow out there?
Mr. DeVille, um, I just need to ask you to keep your comments to the proposal at hand. Um, you've branched out and said that you don't trust people in the town and all that stuff and.
Well, I'm done.
But no, you can, I can, I can allow you to wind it up, but.
No, I'm, I'm wound up, but the thing is, is it just, it's a mess. It's going to be a mess. And, uh, I, I can't see that. I can see kids playing in that mud slough. It's kind of deep, that mud. I played in that mud and, uh, it, it could be kind of dangerous and things like that. So none of that's taken into consideration. But I vented what I wanted to vent, so that's all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to testify? All right, I will close public testimony, open it up for counsel, questions, comments, anything? Councilman Jerrance.
Ron, I'm going to ask your question. I'm going to ask your question, probably of Brandy. I'm not sure who you want to answer this, but, uh, that's a, the second time that's been answered or asked and, um, it's in regards to how many, uh, how much apartment growth can actually happen in an R3? How much apartment growth can actually happen in an R3? Just for the public to know, and others that are probably listening right now.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Germs, for reiterating that. The... For the R3 multifamily residential, the maximum could be 65 units. This is 2.55 acres. What the developers have proposed is that they would like to do fourplexes, so two fourplex structures. There isn't anything that does hold them to that, so the max that it could be if they were doing traditional R3 would be 65, and that's just one-bedroom units. And then if you did three-bedroom units, it would be 44. You also have to take into consideration parking requirements and all of that that goes into development of a site. So the reason for going the R3 is so that they can have flexibility in how they condo plot it in the future, because obviously, this will probably be condo plotted out for sale of each unit.
Continuation, Councilman?
Yep, they don't have any plans, and we don't know that. They could switch gears if there are three based on... And I'm not going to ask you if you've run the... I mean, if you've ran the calculations based on density of two and a half acres, what could they possibly put in there? Have you run those numbers?
That's the 65. So most dense, 65 one-bedroom units is what... And I just do that, just so I have those calculations, just so I can provide that information. I have it a part of, I believe, the agenda packet. And then that was a discussion at the Planning Commission as well, because obviously, that is something that people are interested in when you're looking at a development project.
Councilman Danforth.
So, you know, I don't know how many years ago it's been. It's been quite a number now. When this land was annexed and brought in and zoned as R1, and at the time that that was being requested, the R1 designation for that area seemed appropriate, and I still believe it's appropriate. We have in our state, we have laws that govern what we can and can't do, landowner rights, also protection of wetlands and such. We've been through that 100 times on this piece of land as it relates to Toby slough, and probably... It probably necessitates a much, much bigger discussion in the future about what we do. But here's the problem that I see. We battled for many months on a rezoning, and I don't remember what the development area was up northeast of town, when something was going to get rezoned, requested to come in from R1 to R3, adjacent to R1 living area. And we had a lot of opposition by people that lived in those areas because of that rezoning. The picture that was being painted, no question, looked okay. The problem of it is, is as I think that's where Councilman Germs was going, is they can... Anybody can paint a picture they want to. They don't... Our laws don't require them to go forward with it, as long as they are within the parameters of the zoning. So I can... That's the challenge that we have with rezoning, and that's a challenge we're going to have here every time. And, you know, I pull up the R3 zoning, and, you know, we look at the multifamily. I can say I'm going to put three, fourplexes, or whatever that number is there, but let's be honest, it's going to be... No, not going to be. It certainly could be 45, or 50, or 65 multifamily dwelling units, meaning the individual places. That's the challenge, and I think that's what's wrong with our zoning ordinances we are today. I think new land development and zoning designations is one thing. When we go to a rezoning scenario in developed areas without some kind of ability to hold people to their plan, you have this fight all the time, every time. And I understand it, I get it. I'd like to see this thing get developed, so someday, as I'm somewhere watching these meetings, that it doesn't come before the council and the Plan Commission anymore. But I think, until that becomes and goes in as R1, as it was brought into the community, I think we're going to have this fight and these concerns every time, and they are justified. And so, there's a bigger issue here. I know Mr. DeVille had talked about the water. Again, there's laws that govern what can and can't happen. You know, if a little kid gets stuck in the mud, well, let's remember, you were in the mud at one point, getting to play in there, and, you know, that's a parental thing, so we can't help that. But... So we've got to look at what we can do, and we don't have the ability, at this point, to control development there because of Toby slough. It's not protected. So whatever they're allowed to do, whether it's R1, R2, R3, or whatever they're allowed to do, they could do that anyway, and we don't... We've got handcuffs on us. But my concern tonight is, when we go into this rezoning and what it could be, and it's not just... And Councilman Beeler has said this many, many times over the years, and that is, okay, we say what it is today, but you know what? 10, 20, 30 years from now, if it's R3, it could become something different. We have to look at the future as well, not just current use. So that's where I'm problematic, that's where I'm disagreement... In disagreement with, at least at this point, what the proposal is. The only way for us to get what is something guaranteed to us is through a PUD. State what it is, and that's the way you go. The R3, go through and read your permitted uses and conditional uses, and those are all items that in some manner could get placed there without any further action by council or Plan Commission. And obviously, the conditional uses would have to go before body to potentially get there, but it could happen. So word of caution.
Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we've been through this type of thing so many times, and the same questions seem to come up, time after time. You know, I... God bless a guy for trying to make a buck. I think that's great. But we, as a council, what we have to do is, we have to look at this and say, "Does it fit? I mean, does this fit? Does it fit the neighborhood? How's it going to affect the folks that live there? What are traffic densities?" You know, like Mike said, too. You know, you've got to look down the road, what could happen with that property, once it gets that zoning designation. You know, there's a lot of conditional uses that are available to that property as well. And, you know, you get the wrong council, you know, you could end up with something not very savory in that neck of the woods, too. But not to say, I'm not here to say at this point in time that I would vote against this, but we're having the same challenges, it seems like, over and over. And is this a fit for that land? That's the big question for us, of course. Thank you.
Community Development Manager, Hanton, you had something you wanted to say.
Yeah, if I could, please, just do a couple of follow-ups to Councilman Danforth's remarks of just, as far as the zoning designations go, Planning Commission and City Council always will have to approve, because that's legislative action, or federal at that, that has to go through the process still. The other thing to keep in mind is that R3, the multifamily residential, does exist across the street. So if those houses were to be removed, that is... That's the zoning designation that's there currently. And then I believe the intent would be to do similar construction with fourplexes that is adjacent to the lake, on the north side of South Lake Drive there, because that is what they put down in their application, is that they would do two fourplexes. And obviously, we know that the possibility of what R3 allows for, but it does also allow for a variety of housing types, instead of just single-family, that is still within conformity with lake development in the areas. South Lake Drive is a collector route, also, to keep in mind. And then I had one more point that I'm going to slip on. I'll see if I can think of it, if there's more that comes up.
Councilman Shetty.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as far as, you know, our decision will be here in two weeks, it isn't approving a, you know, a fourplex, or a duplex, or a duplex. It's approved the potential of an R3, as we've shared here. So really, that's the challenge, is because I know in the past, when this was brought up to us, the reason I voted against R3 in the past was because of the potential of an R3. And I guess that's really what it boils down to. We're not... I doubt we're probably... Well, we're not against developing it, putting a house in there. May not even be against putting a fourplex in there, potentially, I'm not sure. But we're not voting on that. We're voting on R3 and what the maximum of an R3 could be. So we've got two weeks here to kind of work through that process and see what makes sense.
Councilman Peters.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't going to speak, but I thought I'd better hear quick. So the comments on, "Does this fit in R3?", I think this is the issue I have, is every time a development comes up, we have the discussion about changing the ordinance, or looking into the ordinance too much. And I find that to be a little bit unfair. And when I'm looking at this property, I'll be honest with you, I don't love this from a development standpoint, but if it was not supposed to be developed, a comment of GFP or state land or something came up, then they ought to own it. But right now, it's held privately, given the opportunity to be developed. I like the idea of the wetland delineation. I like the idea of not worrying about what's on, I think, the east side is what the wetlands are. But I just struggle with not looking at this as an opportunity to help solve. And I get the R1 discussion, I get the R3 discussion, but if I remember right, this project was the start of us going down a year-long path of looking at the CL zoning ordinance, and opening that back up, and trying to make changes to it. And I think the public is probably going to wonder why we spent a year in the zoning ordinance, and yet we're having the same discussion that we did a year before this. So I'm open-minded to it. Again, I don't love the site, but I like the idea of these folks coming and presenting an idea for development.
Councilman Tupper.
So this question is for Community Development Manager, Hanton, and kind of echoes on Councilman Peters' comments. So recently, we just went through the whole Lake District, and on the opposite side of the lake, I can't remember what you guys called it, lake-adjacent? Is that correct wordage? Is R3 allowed in lake-adjacent?
You can do multifamily on the second story.
What's that?
You can do multifamily housing on the second story of a commercial business.
R3 and commercial lake zoning are two separate zoning designations.
Councilman Danforth, would you answer... I mean, would you state that on record?
Well, the R3 zoning and the commercial lake zoning are completely separate zoning designations. Not... The R3 is not embedded in the commercial lake. They're separate, just like commercial is separate from residential. They're distinctly different.
And so, and that's where I was going with saying, so the use, as far as being able to do residential in the Lake Commercial District, is allowed if it's using the second story of commercial businesses. To keep the Lake Commercial District commercial in nature. And then the other... This is my other thought, actually, and sorry, Councilman Tupper, that I'm kind of grandstanding, that my other thought came into my mind of, with the PUD mentioned, that like, they did come forward with the PUD previously, and that was denied. That was also different ownership at that time, so then these plans have changed.
Maybe I should reword my question. Is, in our ordinance today, R3 allowed on that property?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but the answer to that is no, not unless it's rezoned.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean...
That's what I mean, yes.
It's only allowed if this body of people allows it to go there. There's no right to R3 or any zoning over there, except R1 today. Does it... There's... Could it go there? That's what's in front of us right now.
Yeah, and that's what my question was.
That was the question.
Is it allowed? Yes, with the rezoning, it is allowed.
The request to rezone is allowed, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, the request.
Councilman Beeler.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. First off, you know, I appreciate anybody that's willing to put their money on the line for a development, you know? I think that's great. You know, Mike had mentioned earlier, a PUD, and so, Community Development Manager, Hanton, just so the public kind of understands it, first off, a PUD kind of sets the parameters for the property, all the characteristics of that property when it's built. And so, once you've made a... Once there's a contract, I guess we'd call it, to make that a PUD, once you say what you're going to do and how you're going to develop it, that's the way it's got to get done. And of course, the Planning Commission and the City Council would all have to agree to those different components. But, you know, you said we did a PUD. I'm sorry if I don't remember, but did we try a PUD with that other development? Is that...
With this property?
Yeah, I just don't... It seems like we did.
Yes.
But to me, for this, I think the better way to go about this would be a PUD, because one of the big concerns we have, obviously, is what's going to happen, what could happen down the road with an R3. And that way, we lock, you know, if they say they're going to put in, you know, two fourplexes, that's what it's going to be, and that's all it can be. You know, ingress, egress, all those little details have to be approved on that PUD. So that may be another avenue.
And to that, Councilman Beeler, if you don't mind, Mayor. I did discuss that with the applicants after knowing what their intent is, and I think that the more appropriate thing would be for them to go R2, to the single-family attached, because then you can do fourplexes. And so, it would just be a matter of how they subdivide it. So if we're worried about, you know, overall density of the R3, I would say that that would be an appropriate route to come back, because they only want to do residential.
That's a good point, very good point.
Manager Hanton, though, that's not what's before council, correct?
Correct.
We don't have the right, nor should we even be discussing whether it would be more appropriate for R2, because that's not what's before us.
Just before they get any ideas of PUD, but yes. I just wanted to state that, that as far as what they are... What they're presenting, that could be an option, but they decided to apply to rezone to R3, not R2.
Okay, Mr. Hansen, Mr. Warner, I'm going to ask what I think is going through everyone's mind. If what you want is going to be accomplished by R2, why didn't you go R2? Because the thing is, this... I mean, this piece of land has been through at least, this is number four in the last several years, and it's always the fear of what could come there that not has always derailed it, but seems to always be the big specter of what could be is worse than even what is offered.
So for us, it's really two things. I know that the council and Planning Commission generally doesn't like, I don't know, Brandy's probably going to hate me for using this term, "spot zoning." So we felt that being adjacent to R3, it seemed appropriate from that standpoint. The other standpoint, as it relates to us, is having flexibility. With R3, we would be able to, let's just say that you had a fourplex, or two fourplexes, which is what we're planning on doing, you could have two separate associations by creating two separate lots with an R3. Where in R2, we give that up, and then we would have, if we're creating an association, have to include all of it. So giving more flexibility, keeping good neighbors, good neighbors, that's really what we would prefer to do, is maintain flexibility.
All right, thank you. Councilman Germs?
Yeah. Thanks, Aaron, and I haven't met you, Mr. Warner.
Yep, Russell.
Russell Warner. I've heard the name. And I commend you for coming in in the last year, or the last six months, and taking a shot at it, because development's not easy. year or the last six months and, and taking a shot at it, because development's not easy. Been in your seat before. And I guess the one question is, is what, what did you expect? I mean, this was R1 when you purchased. It was R1 when Aaron purchased. I mean, what was your expectation when you bought this?
Well, I, first coming into this, it was kind of put in front of me. It was one of those deals where a partner had to exit, and I came into it, and they were going through the PUD process. And what I saw was, everyone was worried about the density issue. And so coming into this, I thought it would be a dunk to change this, lower the density, and do the wetland determination. And I thought it would, it'd be an easy move to move through. So it wasn't, I didn't strategically purchase the property, is basically what I'm saying.
So that's the questions the, the public has asked, is when you purchased it, it was R1, what was the expectation? So thanks for answering that. Flexibility is good. I'm beginning to feel a lot more comfortable with the PUD also. I believe the PUD would have went through the first time. We saw a lot of testimony from opposition. And it was, you, you've done one wise thing. You've taken and, and backed off from the wetland that was really controversial, and that's the island coming out there. So, I mean, we're getting closer. I'm, I'm with the other conversation that a PUD, so that the neighbors, the community, those that live around you, the neighbors, like you talked about, Aaron, are more comfortable knowing that there are going to be three plexes, four plexes. I'm, I'm still trying to calculate, and I've got two weeks to think about why two homeowners' associations would be beneficial, but you might have good, good reasons for that.
Councilman Danforth.
There seems to be some, in my mind, some misalignment, misunderstanding here. If you zone R3, as an example, R3 is R3. It is what, you can go in here and you can read what it is, what's allowable. That language is, that, that assumption of information is, is also being applied to the PUD. A PUD is not a PUD, is not a PUD. Every PUD is individually, it, it's defined on how they're established and, and what the process is, but each PUD stands on its own based on what the plan is. That's completely different than R1, R2, R3, or anything else that we have for designated zoning areas. It was said that, that this went through the PUD application before and it failed. Well, yeah, but that was a completely different picture of what that PUD was going to consist of than what you're proposing right now. And I, I just think that, that's, that's being misapplied or misunderstood. Just because it was, it failed before, wasn't because it was a PUD, wasn't the process, it was the picture that was painted, that's saying, here's what we want to do in this area. And so, we knew what the picture looked like, because you were going to get held to that, and it failed, because it was, for whatever the reason, it was too much, right? Wasn't the right fit for whatever the reason. That doesn't mean in this application that a PUD is the wrong application. I believe, in my mind, that the PUD is the right way to go, personally. I'm not telling you what to do. I'll act on the R3 based on all things that are in front of us, based on the R3 zoning uses and conditional uses, as well as public input and such. But that's how I have to respond today, and I think that's where the mayor was going with this, is that's what's in front of us. You requested in R3. That doesn't mean, if, if this passes, you're on your way. If it fails, doesn't mean that the PUD isn't the right way to go by defining it properly, because now you've locked yourself into, here's, here's what the picture looks like, and if, if it gets approved, that's exactly what we're going to do. And that may be in an incident like this, that might be the right thing to do in order to get something done. I, I hope this thing gets done. And again, I, I like the others here. I commend you for wanting to do this and looking at it. There are developable rights that we have as far as land ownership. We don't write those laws. So, you know, I'd like to do whatever I can to help get this done in a manner that works for you and works best for those around you and in our community. It isn't going to satisfy everybody, no matter what happens, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, ultimately, in Northeast Watertown, when we went through this gyration, iteration over several months, it ended up being a PUD that got passed. And it was because the, the homeowners in that area finally said, we can buy into the plan that's there, and then go up there now. And it's, it's, I think it's built, if I remember right. So, but they knew exactly what they were getting with that. So that's just.
All right, council, I've got, I've got Councilman Shetty, Peters, Tupper, Beeler in a row, but I am going to ask you, this is a first reading. Try to focus upon questions that you have that need to be answered so that we can have a vote at the second reading. I'd just say, we've had discussions along these same lines, and nothing that has been said tonight has been inappropriate, or, I mean, but I'm just saying, I've heard it before, like, four times. And not to say that we don't do it again, because that is part of the public hearing, and I believe very strongly in that. And this plan is different than the others, and we don't want to tar and feather this plan based upon the previous plans that have come up, because it is different. But I do ask council to focus upon what we need tonight to have a vote in two weeks. Manager Hanton, did you have something to say before I go to council?
Just a point of clarity, with the PUD, the minimum lot size that you need is three acres. To even propose to rezon to that, it was five acres, and then we just changed it to three. And so then this property is 2.55. So that's where they would have to look at expanding that footprint, but then again, you get into the wetland area, and you want to avoid that.
Councilman Shetty.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll keep this brief. You know, a couple things here, just as far as this evening's discussion. You know, Mr. DeVille, I appreciate your concern, concerns, that is, as well. This property is already set, though, to be developed as an R1, so that, in theory, that ship has already sailed, or that this property, this property is going to be developed potentially. So we have that, you know, that we're moving forward, at least with an R1. And again, and then again, just one more affirmation to Mr. Warner, I appreciate your, what you shared tonight, is, I guess, from your shoes, you probably were thinking, well, yeah, here's our proposal, here's what we're going to do. It seems like it should just move forward. And in some cases, I get what you're saying, it should, but yet tonight, or this vote we're going to be doing here in two weeks isn't on your proposal. It's just on, it really has nothing to do with you guys as much as it does with us as a council. Do we want to see this property as an R3? So just, we've got to separate that out just a little bit here. The decision is more on R3 than it is on, you know, what you guys are desiring to do, which, which I appreciate, which I kind of can see what you're doing. It kind of fits in R1, really, just can't be built in an R1. So it's just, how do we get, how do we get there? So anyway, that's just my, my thoughts on this, so.
Councilman Peters.
Brandy hit on it already, but I was going to bring that up on the minimum acreage requirement. And if you remember back when we had this original discussion, that was part of the issue that the public had, is that, if I remember right, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, we had to add in that, that island to hit the minimum acreage, and it wasn't going to be developed. So it was just adding in acres to hit the PUD. And if I remember right, and this is before my time on council, it was the controversial part of one of them up by northeast side of town, was that the city contributed acres to get to the, the PUD limit. So the PUD, yeah, I mean, that sure seems to make sense, but we're going to have to stuff in acres to hit the PUD, if that's the route we're going to go, which is the same reason, or one of the reasons it failed the last time. So I just wanted to make that point.
Councilman Tupper.
All due respect for everybody here tonight, but, you know, I think we're spending a lot of time talking on a PUD that isn't going to work, because it's not enough acres. The developers aren't here asking us for PUD, and we're trying to tell them they have to put in a PUD before we're going to be happy with it. They're here to see if whether or not we're going to approve this as an R3, until they change their proposal. We're spending a lot of time talking about something that they haven't even proposed yet, and we already know that it won't work, because there's not enough acreage there to fit a PUD. We had to decide in two weeks whether or not we're going to make it an R3. We're spending a lot of time discussing things that aren't really prevalent to this.
Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. I like Brandy's idea, or I should say, Manager Hanton. You, I think that R2 would make a lot more sense, in my opinion. You know, that, that way, they're going to keep the size, there's a limitation to the size that they can put there. But I do have a question, though, and that, you had mentioned something about an association. Can you kind of explain a little bit about that? You said you'd have to split that up. Could you give a little more explanation on that, please?
I, I think that Brandy could better articulate what I'm trying to say, but could you help me out here with the setbacks and the lots, and you can probably do a better job.
So I actually was a little unclear about what, the mention of the HOAs. The only thing that, when we were discussing between if they going R2 or R3, R3 does allow them to utilize it as one lot, how they're proposing to plant it, so that they can have multiple units, that they don't have to split up the lots to have your one primary structure, which, because in an R2 district, you're only allowed one primary structure, which at maximum would be for a fourplex. And then, but for R3, you can have multiple buildings on one lot. So I think that's where, in your statement of as far as setting up the HOA. But there could be options with R2, it just, all around, for what they were proposing, what they presented, and ultimately, that is their decision, and of how the lot is proposed to be planted, and then the R3 zoning, so.
Any follow-up, Councilman?
No.
Councilman Danforth.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a clarity question here. The gentleman, first of all, I'm looking at the site plan here right now, and I'm looking at Lot 2B, but do you also own Lot 2A?
Yes.
And what is your plan for that?
There's currently a cabin and shop on that property.
So what's your plan for that property? Because?
It'll remain.
Yeah, we don't plan on doing anything. We plan on maintaining.
Because that puts you over the hump on the three acres, if that's what the case is, that lot. So my other question is, because the two combined would put you at three and a half acres. So, but I do have a question. If I have a PUD, can I, can I subdivide that within the PUD and say, okay, here's the PUD, here's the plan, and I'm going to sell this fourplex to somebody and this fourplex to, so can there be individual ownerships within there? But they all have to conform to the PUD requirement, correct?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Jones.
I'm going to just respond to me telling somebody to do a PUD or an R2. That's not really what I'm intending to do with any of my comments. My intention would be to speed this up for you and get this thing done. And I'm, I'm, I've got a hunch other councilmen are thinking the same way. We've seen this, we've heard this, we've been there, and we want this to work out so that you and your neighbors are all halfway feeling good about it. So I just, I think it's also good that we give you a preemptive idea on what we're thinking right now, what we're thinking two weeks ahead. So you don't come here in two weeks and go, boy, I had a, I had a feeling they were going to get that thing passed. Well, we're, we're kind of letting you know what we're thinking, and I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? Thank you very much to everyone who came to testify, and we will have this back for a vote in two weeks, or at the next council meeting. Item 11A is an application for a special, a special event malt beverage retailer's license and special event retail wine license to the Watertown Area Chamber of Commerce for June 5th of 2025 for the Wine and Beer Walk. We will go to our interim city manager, Bob Zine, for more information.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, in front of the council is an application for the special event malt beverage. All fees have been paid, notice has been published. This is an event that we, the chamber's hosted in the past, so everything's kind of in line. I can stand by for questions. Thank you.
Manager Hanton, Manager Hanton and Mr. DeVille, if you're going to have a conversation, would you go out into the, out into, on the other side of the door?
No, no, no. Oh, my gosh.
That's not in public.
All right.
Your date's leaving you.
All right. We have had staff talk to us. I'm sorry about that segue. Mr. Sheehan, the director of the Watertown Area Chamber of Commerce, would you like to say anything about this?
No, they need to.
Okay. Yeah, the Wine and Beer Walk is known to, I think, the community. It's a great event, kicking off summer, basically. So I will accept a motion to approve the application. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Beeler. Any questions or comments, council? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the application, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11B is an application for a special event retail on-sale license to the Lake Area Zoological Society for the Sip and Safari Event on June 27th of 2025. Interim City Manager, Bob Zine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is another special event license. All fees have been paid, notice has been published, everything's in order. Another event that's happened multiple years with success, so if there's any questions, I can help. Thanks.
I know that we have Jamie Stricker here from the Bramble Park Zoo. Oh, I'm sorry. Would anyone like to come up and say anything about the event?
No, you can.
Well, how about both of you just introduce yourself, and we'll start that way.
So I am Jamie Stricker. On, I thought, there it is. I am Jamie Stricker. I am the zoo educator at the Bramble Park Zoo, and I have with me Andrea Henin, our Lake Area Zoological Society president. You said this was a free plug, right?
Plug away.
So I just want to say, say thank you for supporting this event over the years. It is something the zoo works with the zoo society very hard on to make a successful event. It is 21 and over, so we do close the zoo at 4 o'clock, so that anybody who comes to our event at 6 is carded and wrist-banded at the door. And then we have many bands, food options, drink options, and of course, the zoo as you walk around. And then we have raffle items that you can win. So lots of businesses and organizations in the community are very generous with sponsoring the items in the baskets, and then all of the food trucks, the alcohol, the entertainment. And so we are currently working right now on gathering donations and getting everything offset. I think last year on our financials, the zoo society raised about $16,000 on this one-night event.
Nice. Anything to add?
We'll be selling tickets soon, so get them beginning of June if it's approved.
Where do you go to get them?
At the zoo.
Okay. All right, I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Can I get a motion to approve the application? Motion made by Councilman Beeler, second by Councilman Peters. Any questions or comments, council? Just like to say, it's a great fun event, benefits the zoo, and by benefiting the zoo, it benefits the entire community. So thank you much for doing that. Motion is to approve the application. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11C is an application for a new retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to JVC LLC, doing business as La Bodega. We'll go to our finance officer, Kristen Bobzine, for more information.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so this one is a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license. The location has been approved.
South Dakota farm wine license, the location has been approved for off sale, if at any time it is requested to go to on sale, it would have to come before the board of adjustment for approval, but currently, as off sale, it is approved, all fees have been paid, all notices have been published, everything's in line, so if you have any questions, I can help, thanks.
All right, thank you, open a public hearing, is there anyone who would like to testify in this event, on this item? Close the public hearing, open it up for council action, can I get a motion to approve the application? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Beeler, any questions or comments? Hearing no questions or comments, the motion is to approve the application, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carries. Item 11D is a renewal of a retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license and video lottery license for BMG Incorporated, doing business as Ringo's. And we will go to Kristen Bob Zine, our interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, before the council is a renewal of the retail on off sale malt beverage license for Ringo's, Ringo's did receive a violation in this last year, so that's why this renewal is before the council, but all fees have been paid and notice has been published, so if there's any questions, I can help, thank you.
I see a public hearing, someone is wanting to talk to us, so please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Brad, I'm the owner, it says required attendance, and I couldn't make the last council meeting, anyway, in the letter, it just says, what happened, in the letter from the city, what happened, and then what, what has been done to prevent future violations, this is my first one in 10 years, we don't, we don't really see as underage drinking as a problem down there, but this proves that, I guess it can, and for prevention, that's kinda what I instilled, I should say, in my employees, is, if an underage person comes in, they're not gonna tell ya, you gotta, you gotta ask the questions, you gotta card them, and then, you know, we're the, we're the only line of defense between the alcohol and the minor, so pay attention, then the only other thing I did was, I'm gonna start tracking it, how many people come in that don't have IDs that we turn away, it's a question I've never asked, I got three in April and two in May, that's all.
All right, thank you very much, is there anyone else who would like to testify on this item? Close the public hearing, open it up for council action, can I get a motion to renew the licenses? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Shuddy, open it up for questions and comments, council? When was it, Mr. Melmer, was it? Mayner, okay, so I didn't think that I heard that correctly, so, sorry about that, thank you, it was interesting that you had tracked some of those numbers as well, so. All right, the motion is to renew the licenses, I feel okay just going to a voice vote, all those in favor of renewing the licenses, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carries. Item 12A is an approval of a ground lease agreement at the Watertown Regional Airport with Pioneer Agaviation in the amount of $11,000 roughly, we go to our airport manager, Ian Meriwether.
Thank you, Mayor, this will be the lease for the first agriculture applicator out on the new, newly constructed applicator area, this consists of approximately 40,000 square feet inside the fence, 11,000 square foot of concrete approach and parking area with a 4,750-foot connection to the roadway, and I'll stand by for any questions, and that term, sorry, the term will be for 25 years, with the ability to extend that for another 10.
Thank you, can I get a motion to approve the agreement? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Peters, any questions or comments, council? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agreement, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carries. Item 12B is an approval of a service agreement with Service Master of Watertown, for the cleaning of the city hall basement records and disposal of remaining miscellaneous surplus items, in the amount of roughly $29,000, and authorization to pay 50% down using a special check, finance officer, Bob Zine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, yes, as stated, I mean, it's pretty, I don't have a lot extra to add, just that it is the service agreement, that helps remove and clean some of the documents that are in the basement, on our way to our new building shortly, so if there's any questions, I can answer them, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, can I get a motion to approve the agreement and authorize the check? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Peters, let's open it up for any questions or comments, Councilman Danforth.
Ms. Bob Zine, could you just take a second and just explain why we're doing this, so the people understand why we're spending $28,000 to do this, if you would, please?
So, thank you, yes, there has been just a few issues, as we all know, it's a basement in kind of a closed environment, so, there's been a little bit of review of the documents that are down there, and before we bring them to our new facility, we are gonna go through the process of cleaning them, just to make sure that we're not bringing anything over to the new, new location, so, thank you.
Thank you, and just to note, that most of the move from current city hall to new city hall is just being done by staff, and none of, none of us, while we are experts in many areas, none of us are experts in moving, or dealing with cleaning, so, that is part of the justification as well, so, any further questions or comments? The motion is to approve the agreement and authorize the check, all those in favor will say aye, opposed, nay, finance officer, Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay, Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jerrons?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12C is an authorization for the mayor to sign a letter of commitment as a participating jurisdiction in Cottington County Hazard Mitigation Plan, interim city manager, Bob Zine, did you wanna take this, or is it with Chief Roland? Yep.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, I'm here tonight with Cottington County Emergency Management Director, Andrew Doggato, we are here tonight to ask the mayor to sign an agreement with both municipalities, the county and the city, as well as other cities within the county as well, this is a PDM plan, currently, it's funded through a, the BRIC grant, and that brand, that grant actually is not allowable anymore, I believe, and we're gonna move forward with the HMGP grant, it's the Hazard Mitigation Grant, and that grant will allow us to continue to fund our consultant, which is First District, correct? And this grant else will help us with disaster reimbursements, and also with mitigation measures as well, such as like tornado shelters, I think some of you guys are aware that we've applied for those in the past, and also tornado sirens, so, my colleagues, is there anything else you wanna add?
No, I guess, the main commitment from, from you all, I guess, last time, when we held these meetings, we just had, you know, representatives from the police department, fire department, municipal utilities, public works, they joined together, identified hazards within Cottington County, different mitigation projects that could potentially lessen the severity or cost basis for the city of Watertown, based on those hazards, and kinda prioritizes them, so high, medium, or low priority, and then what timeframe we want to, to get to those, and by having those hazards listed, it doesn't necessarily guarantee that, I mean, it certainly doesn't guarantee that we're going to get mitigation funding for them, but it is a requirement in order to receive the mitigation funding, to potentially help offset some of the costs associated with those mitigation projects.
And just one other note, too, Mayor, the letter that you have actually has a misprint, it needs to read City of Watertown, not Cottington County on it, so, we'll have to redo that.
I am just going to ask council for the okay to, well, actually, we haven't even taken official motion yet, so I will just change the wording when we do it, all right, thank you very much, please stand by for any questions, can I get a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of commitment as a participating jurisdiction of the city of Watertown? Motion made by Councilman Beeler, second by Councilman Tupper, any questions or comments? Yep, Councilman Tupper.
Either one of you gentlemen can answer this possibly, but I, I'm gonna probably lean on Chief Roland a little bit, because you remember years ago when we built the storm shelter down by Anza Soccer Field?
Yep.
Is there anything in the future that's planned with any of this, any future development type situations like that?
Well, that's part of that funding, that if there is disasters, there's a 10% funding that goes along with that, so we can apply for a pre-disaster mitigation grant again in the future, I do believe it comes with a 20% match from the city, correct, Andrew?
I think that's right. For HMGP, it would be 10% local match, 15% state match, and then 75% federal.
Okay.
But there is, sorry.
There is nothing planned right now?
So, one of the projects that was listed in the city of Watertown's, I guess there's a table that shows potential mitigation projects, and storm shelter is listed as one of them.
Is that the one in the southwest part of town?
So, the problem statement is, certain areas and populations are not covered by storm shelters, action would be to construct a tornado shelter near the city's mobile home parks is specifically.
That would make sense, one down the southwest, so, I would encourage that, we at least look into that, and see if we can get a grant for that, so thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to authorize the commitment, all those in favor will say aye, opposed, nay, officer, Bob Zine.
Okay, Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jerrons?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, we're on to city council member announcements and introduction of topics for discussion, does anybody have anything? I'd like to just say two quick things, number one, we are just over a month away from July 4th, and we need people to help raise money for the annual fireworks show, so, we will start on that, Councilman Tupper is always leading the charge, and I help out where I can, we're always looking for more people and more supporters in the community to help us put on the show, it costs us every year over $50,000 to do this for the community, and I think people appreciate it, but it cannot happen without public support, so I wanted to mention that ahead of time, Councilman Tupper?
Can I just add on to that a little bit, yeah, everybody's support is truly appreciated, I can't remember the estimated crowd we had last year, but I know it was well over 10,000 people that were at the show, so, very great opportunity for the, the community, so.
Yes, I hear Councilman Beeler is going to be singing, any, I have one more topic to bring up, and that is, we are very close to moving forward with the next step in the hiring of our next city manager, the succession planning committee has finished their work, they are going to be forwarding a list of candidates that have already been through a thorough vetting process, including a first interview, they are passing off their work now to the city council, now it is in our hands, and we will be finalizing the details as far as when and how we are going to cross that finish line, but I just wanna say that the comments that I've been hearing, I'm still, I have still been out of this, I do not know who the candidates are, and that has been on purpose, because I want to be on the side of the city council and give every candidate a fair shake, and that was also part of the process that, as a city government, we chose to do, to, just to have this all above board and, and take those steps, I will say that the committee that I have talked to, they have said that we would be in great hands with any of the candidates that have made it to the finalist section, that they are extremely happy with the people that we have, Watertown will be in good hands with any of them, so we're picking from a slate of winners, and I also wanted to say that I had a quick call this afternoon with interim city manager, Bob Zine, HR Director, Darcy Nichols, and the Robert Half Group, Robert Half Group is the recruiting firm that we hired, and I will just say, I will speak for manager Bob Zine and, or officer Bob Zine and Director Nichols, and saying that this was, they had met the Robert Half Group, and talking with them, they said they were extremely impressed, this is a, this is a firm that specializes in hiring the highest levels of CEOs for companies in the nation, but they have, also have extensive experience in hiring for very important positions in municipalities and governments all across the nation, including the city manager position, so, just hearing those good words from everyone who is getting closer to the process, it's a very exciting process, now it is going to be in the hands of the city council, we'll be talking about that, about how to get this across the finish line, but hopefully, we'll be taking those steps very soon, the timeline has always been that it would be as fast as possible with making sure that it, we take the time that it takes to make it, sure we do it right, the hope was that we could get it done sometime in May, it looks like it's probably gonna be very early in June, and I think that's doing really well, because you don't wanna hurry a process like this when you're hiring the highest position in the city of Watertown, so, I wanna commend the committee for the work that they've done, the Robert Half Group and the council for their patience, and now it's in our hands, and we're gonna decide among great candidates about who's gonna make the best partnership on taking Watertown forward, any further items for discussion? All right, city manager, report? We do have a reason to go into executive session for contractual and personnel issues, we will not be taking any action when we come out, with that, can I get a motion to go into executive session? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, need a second, seconded by Councilman Jerrons, all those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carries, we will adjourn when we come out, thank you and good night, and God bless you, Watertown.